It's just points of clarification. Why didn't you attach? It's there, like you've come with all the communicate between the local authority and the contractor. Thank you very much. You leave your supportive evidence, which is there? Anyway, the other question was, when are we seeing this project done? You made an extension on 11th March this year. We are coming from October 5th, 2023. We do not want to be talking of this and that people, community need the services. When are we seeing this completed? Yes, yes.
Thank you, Chair. I'll invite the Director Engineering Services to shed more light, Chair, I submit.
Director Engineering.
Thank you, Chair. The project chair is supposed to finish by end of May, 2025, which is this very month. And as the CS already alluded to, the evidence to the current status, if you allow, we can submit through secretariat. But otherwise, it has advanced. They are just painting right now. So we can attach that, we can submit that evidence afterwards to show that indeed they'll be able to finish by end of May. I submit.
From 2023?
Chair.
Yes, yourself.
Thank you, Chair. I think as attached in the appendix, the first contract was terminated, Chair, due to delays that were experienced with the first contractor. So yes, it is from 2023, but there was a termination in between. And then we had to engage another contractor, the one we are saying will be able to finish it in May. I submit, Chair.
Chair, I'm done. You are done. I only hope they are not going to any other local authority or town, get people working there. Then they send it to say, this is the clinic. That possibility is there. Why? If it is true, come month end, May. How did it come out of your society, Engineer? You are confident. The way you are speaking, for surely works are going on and to finish. But how come you forgot? Director Engineering.
Chair, yes, I'm confident that the works are ongoing at the moment and they are painting, as earlier indicated. And it was just an omission, Chair, that the progress report was interattached. But as indicated, we can submit even today to secretariat. I submit.
Thank you so much. Next question, Honorable Member for Sakire.
Next question.
On the same, yes, next question. Either on the same or a different question?
Hold up, then I do my substantive question.
Okay.
Or not even a question. Let me do a comment. Chair, these omissions in terms of evidence has become more prevalent. It's a practice now with local authorities. And we've been telling them what this is an evidence base committee. So they should be cautioned, your witness should be cautioned. Evidence must be scrutinized here. Evidence that they tend after an interaction is not scrutinized. So we want to give a good report that is reflective of the evidence that has been scrutinized. Just like yourselves here. For you to work properly, you must be given all the working tools. But now you are making serious omissions so that this committee does not bring out the best. That's why even in terms of improvement, we are taking long as a nation to reach a level that we want because most of the recommendations we make, they are not informed by the actual evidence, but by sometimes speculations. So I thought I could comment that with your indulgence, I take the commentary to page 26.
Page 26?
Yeah. Appendix 2.4, Secondary Boarding and Skills Development, kuacha was unspent, indicating a percentage of 31%. On the cause of query, Chair, they are saying management wishes to inform the committee that the query was due to 172 youths who did not report for training under skills development, as well as 13 learners under secondary boarding, secondary boarding and school bazaar. Further, there was one school that did not send an invoice until after the year ended. And payment was only done in 2024. The committee may also wish to note that an amount of 4,998,441 was approved for 2023 Secondary Boarding, School and Skills Development bazaris, while 381,200 was reserved for beneficiaries who were already on bazaar reform 2022. Further, to the above, a total amount of 4,21342 had been spent on the skills and secondary boarding leaving a balance of 1,358,299 unspent, as indicated in the 2023 approval, financial statement. And Chair, on the action taken, they are telling us management wishes to inform the committee that the matter was reported to the CDFC committee and unspent funds amounting to 1,347 were carried forward to 2024 and have since been spent on 2024 skills and secondary boarding bazaris. In addition, unpaid divorce amounting to 10,555 relating to unspent at Muangala, Muangali Training Institute was
Mawangali?
Mawangali?
Yes, Mawangali.
In Zambia. Training Institute was equally paid in 2024, bringing the total amount to 1,358,299. So Chair here, I want to express happiness here, Chair. The practice that we've seen with other local authorities, when funds are spent, the skills development fund, they quickly learn to vary the fund. But we are happy here. They were carried forward and continued this. So this is a practice that should be encouraged. However, Chair, we have a concern here. I've seen on the exhibit on Appendix 14, Chair, there are minutes. I've seen quite right payment vouchers supported with the bank statement, but I've not seen student head account register and other related financials that indicate how you are paying the meal allowance. This is why I bring that here. Even when I look at their payments, despite exhibiting all the financials on the skills development, their payments are in May. All of them. I've seen one, two, three, four, five, about five payment vouchers all in May, meaning that this period, the schools were almost concluding the first semester or first term. This is when you are paying. And also, it goes to the same meal allowances. So if you are making payments when the schools are closing, what justice are you doing? School fees don't work, but the meal allowances. Because I understand you have more use with various institutions on the school fees. So why should you pay meal allowances late, punishing the learners who cannot study with hunger? My first, they can respond to that then later on, I'll come, Chair.
Yes, CS.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair, for that question. I'll invite the Director Finance to just shed more light, I submit, Chair.
DF.
Thank you very much, Chair. I will tackle the first question, which is to do with why all the payments were done in May.
DF, kindly move the microphone closer to your mouth.
Thank you, Chair. What I was saying is, I will start with the first question, which is to do with why all the payments were done in May. The way we handle the payments as Kazungula Town Council, we start by first of all, do the due diligence just to verify whether all the students that were approved for particular skills have actually reported to those specified institutions. After that, the school or the institution issues out an invoice to the local authority. And that is when now the payment will come on to. Okay.
The Honorable Member for Sakire is saying he is not clear with what you are saying.
Okay. Basically, what I was saying is, what could have attributed to the delayment in the payment of the tuition fees to the learning institution? The processes of verifying the students that had reported before we could go ahead to make the payments, Chair. I hope maybe I'm more clearer now?
There's a question you can see from Honorable Karo himself. Yes, Honorable Member. My DF, please just switch off the microphone.
Thank you very much, Chair. Here we learn from the response that there were delayments because of the process. Which process is that? Because the process we know is that immediately after opening, maybe a week or few days within that week, or maybe just a week to give others who may come, report that come one, a week or two. A team from council should go to various institutions and do head accounts. Immediately after head count is winning now, the institutions will give you the invoice. In the absence of that, I think the practice which is there, you will not see the invoice. I've seen even in your submission on the cause of query, where you are saying there was one school that did not send an invoice until after the year ended. So what was the council doing there? They are just waiting for an invoice, one year. There is no justice here.
Let them respond.
To the learners, even to the government that is disbanding this CDF, Chair. Now, just want to, don't say. So this delayment here, they are saying one in 2024, but all of them are 2024 and 2025. So what do they mean? If the one which was dread was paid in 2024. But when I check here, all of them are May 2024 and May 2025. So can they show us one which was paid earlier? Because they're only admitting having paid for one. But when I check all of them here, about five, six, all of them are 2024 May and one 2025 May. Thank you.
All right, CS.
Chair, we appreciate the guidance given by your committee that we should have expedited the process of paying for the meal allowances. But Chair, as we have explained, that we also needed to do due diligence with lists that were being submitted by the various learning institutions. I'm sure Chair you are also aware that these lists also have to be approved by the CDFC committee. So there are all these processes that required us to adhere in terms of ensuring that the payments were made on time. However, Chair, we take note of the seriousness, counsel from your committee, and ensure that we'll expedite this process of the payments. I submit, Chair.
Actually, just to add on to what Honorable Karo said, not only meal allowances alone, even the school fees must be paid because the lecturers, for example, need to be paid from the same school fees. Other expenses, electricity, water bills, have to be paid from the same school fees. So if you don't pay on time and only pay meal allowances, you will not be doing justice to the institutions. Some institutions have a lot of expenses which depend on the same finances that you pay as councils. So I just wanted to add on that. Yes, Honorable Member for Sakire?
Yes.
Before Dr. Mazza?
Chair, CS is telling us that they needed to do a due diligence. Maybe my first question will be, what creates that comfort of keeping money in the accounts longer than necessary when they know that schools have opened? What creates that comfort? What cartel is behind the drinking, payments, keeping money longer than necessary? Then number two, CS and your team, you are all parents. Why should you be comfortable to undertake your due diligence within a period of one year when you know that a boy child out there and a girl child is suffering? They are not eating. You are holding on meal allowance and everything. Why should you have that attitude when you know that they are not supported and they are drawn from families that are vulnerable or that were families that were not ready at that particular time to support that child? Why should you do that? Do you understand the damage that you cause, especially on a girl child? Because most of these institutions, they are in towns. That exposure in towns, a girl is suffering, a girl who has not eaten. Do you understand what they go through? Have you ever gone to talk to those girls and boys and they explain to you how they are surviving? Thank you very much, Chair.
Yes, Council Secretary?
Thank you very much, Chair, for that wise counsel. Chair, as a local authority, we don't take comforts in the delay to pay for the meal allowances for school-going children. We are parents, Chair, and we always ensure that we have a speedy process to make these payments. However, Chair, like I was explaining, that the local authority will still have to undertake those processes of due diligence, ensuring that even the learning facilities where our children are going are quite conducive. And most of these facilities, Chair, you will notice that they are not within Kazungula. So we'll have to do a physical inspection and ensure that the learning environment is actually conducive. Notwithstanding that, Chair, we have taken your serious counsel in terms of ensuring that this will be a speedy process that we'll undertake. Chair, I want to assure this committee that we are quite receptive to your guidance and to ensure that our peoples are speedily attended to. We submit, Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Honorable Dr. Mazza?
Thank you, Chair. We go to page two. Actually, what I'll do is just to make a summary of the performance of community projects. And we will have some questions from there in the interest of time. The Kazungula Council has had seven projects, starting from page two, that have been queried, community projects. So on page two, page three, five, nine, 11, 13, and 15, seven projects. These projects were awarded starting mid, first quarter of 2023. And the total value of these projects is about 9 million kuacha, which, when you calculate on the 2023 CDF allocation, it occupies closer to 80% of the community component allocation for 2023. Now, here is the performance. Of the seven projects, only one has been completed, whose completion certificate is available. And the building is in use, which actually is project at Matinity Annex on page 13. This is the only project that has been completed. The six are still outstanding. The West is a project on page number four, on page four, which is construction of two dormitories and two abortion blocks at Nyawa Secondary School. This project is under procurement now. And the first project, page two, which Honorable Mithet just asked, is 80% completion in 2025. And another project on page five, which is four teachers' houses, the contractor is still constructing, is still working, despite receiving warning letters from the client. So the performance is that the whole 2023 CDF, in terms of community component, 80% of the community component allocation, the projects have not yet been completed. They are still working in progress. So based on this summary, I want to find out from the Kazungula Town Council. When we look at the details of these projects one by one and looking at the pictures on face value, the works by these contractors looks to be acceptable, just from the pictures. The quality looks to be acceptable. But we see a lot of engagement, struggling, the contractors, that they get. From these, actually, the financials, they, almost every contractor got their advance payment and so on, and then they disappear. They don't disappear, but you continue communicating with them and you persuade them. They go back to work and they do, they do progress on the works. And the output looks to be acceptable. What is the major problem with these contractors engaged in these seven projects? Because the physical output looks to be acceptable, but the attitude is much to be desired. Because I see your great efforts in communicating with these contractors to go back to site. And some of them that have adhered, they have gone. They have gone even though with final warning letters and so on, like the four teachers' houses contractor and also the one with one-by-three classroom block. What is in your own, through interaction that you've been interacting with these people, these contractors? What do you think is the major problem? Because to me, the, just from face value, the work is acceptable with the, a few efforts, they can actually perfect. So if you comment to that? Because to the client, we, the end result is that we have lost on time. But these are contractors who can do it. I see from the pictures that the quality is acceptable. So as a client, we have lost on time and we are almost going to complete these projects, maybe towards the end of this year, some of them, like these that are still under tender. I submit.
Yes, Council Secretary?
Thank you very much, Chair, for that question. Chair, what seemed to be coming out of this non-performance by most of the contractors is the utilization and maximization of their labor force. They sometimes do not seem to maximize their labor in terms of setting targets which they're supposed to complete. And then they also do not seem to adhere to the implementation timelines in terms of completion of these projects. So we have endeavored to engage them fully at all times to ensure that they still comply with those timelines that need them to complete the projects on time. We have also, Chair, managed to strengthen our monitoring mechanism because we tend to notice that if we don't periodically monitor them, there are all these lapses that they do not seem to actually adhere to the timelines. So going forward, Chair, we will continue to ensure that we engage these contractors and ensure that they complete these projects on time and within their agreed timelines. Chair, I think at this chance, allow me, with your permission, to just invite the Director Engineering to also maybe add to what we've just submitted. I submit, Chair.
Yes, Director of Engineering?
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. As the CS has indicated, those are some of the challenges. Of course, there are certain sites that are difficult to access in certain periods of the year. Others have advanced that as a reason to why they have delayed. But essentially also, as the honorable member alluded to, all these were paid advance payment. Most of them also, we see the way they do their cash flows, how they project and how they use their money on the project is a problem because some of them, we found that as we engage them, the real problem is liquidity in terms of cash flow. So we have done engagements. I think even the other one that was referred to where they have completed, that was the real issue where they had many challenges after they had started. But we have been engaging them so that they can be able to finish on time, as the principal officer said. I submit, Chair.
All right, Honorable Dr. Mazza?
Okay, now, George, we're going to a bit specifics, though not so much deeper, page 15. The page 15, Construction of Matinity Annex at Lunungu Rural Health Centre. This project is one of those projects that the contractor has received an intent to terminate the contract. Actually, just a strong, strong, strong warning. And this contractor, at least at the time of audit by June 2024, he received 15% of the contract sum in terms of financial progress. So much is going to, this question is going much to the legal. If we go to page 17, you are saying that however, management engaged the contractor and the default notices have been sent in readiness for termination of the contract. However, the contractor has engaged his legal counsel and communication is being done through their legal counsel. On the other hand, the legal officers from the local authority are seriously studying the contract so that the issue could be resolved. You've referred us to Appendix 7 and 9. So I take Appendix 9. Appendix 9, you have contracts, you have written a letter to the contractor, Jofmas Enterprises. And the key statement is that you've explained the stories as to why this contract shouldn't be terminated. In accordance with clause 54.1 and clause 54.2, you are in a fundamental breach of the contract. In view of the above, you have seven days to respond to this default notice and show cause as to why the procuring entity should not invoke clause 54.1 and terminate the contract. But in your action, you are saying the legal officers from the local authority are seriously studying the contract, specifically that they are studying the contract so that the issue could be resolved immediately. But you have since then sent this letter of serious warning, serious intent to terminate the contract. Serious, in the same vein, project number 11, on page 11, the project on page 11, which is construction of computer lab at Kazungula Secondary School. So if we go to the action on page 13. you have said management has proceeded to issue default notice and warning to the contractor to facilitate for termination and award it to another contractor. So what do you want your committee to take based on these statements? When your action, you are saying your legal officers are studying the contract so that they can resolve the matter and that is pertaining to project number fifteen, on page fifteen. On page eleven, you have actually terminated the contract, because I've seen the termination letter on Appendix number seven. Appendix number seven, there's termination letter, you terminated contract on eighth February twenty twenty-four with this Jofmas Enterprises Limited. In view of the above, we hold that the contract with contract number town examples was in fact terminated and that the termination stands. So you terminated the contract already. But in your action taken on page thirteen, you are saying you are still asking the contractor to facilitate termination. How do you, what do you want your committee to take based on this legal disparities in the appendix, as well as in your, and in your written submission? Thank you.
Yes, CS? Thank you very much, Chair, for that question. Unfortunately, Chair, we have not come with our legal officer who would have basically adequately answered the concerns from your committee, Chair. But briefly, Chair, our take on this matter is that we have the view that the terms and conditions in the contract are not very punitive on the part of the contractors. So we have the idea that there was need for our legal team to study this contract and see what amendments could be made so that the contractor also suffers punitive measures. Because we tend to notice that most of these contractors abandon the works, even when you call them or summon them for meetings, we have this back and forth. So the assignment which we gave our legal team is to try and study the contents of these contracts so that we could make amendments to ensure that certain costs, the contractor also bear them and also take this contract seriously in terms of execution period, Chair. I submit.
Dr. Maza? Actually, before Dr. Maza comes in, why did you decide to leave the legal officer?
Sis, I apologize, Chair. I think it was just an oversight on our part, Chair. We apologize for that.
We didn't know that you were supposed to carry, or to come with you, our senior government officials?
We apologize, Chair, for that omission, Chair. We apologize sincerely, Chair.
You have something to say? Minister of Local Government?
Yes, Chair, just maybe guidance to your, to your witness and maybe also to to help your committee. I know most of these councils, they are having their advocates less than a month or two. But what is important maybe for Kasungula is that the study of these contracts should be done expeditiously. One is that, yes, your termination has been contended by the legal representation of the contractor. So in order not to lose a lot of time, we need to ensure that these matters are concluded. And as much as possible, I think arbitration normally saves a lot of costs in these, in these projects. Especially where you find the projects are on course and going by what Honorable Maza has alluded to, the quality of works and maybe these are local contractors whose capacities you are building. So you need really to enhance stakeholders' engagement in these, in these areas of project undertaking. I submit, Chair.
All right, noted. Dr. Maza, this has another question, or I can, I can ask a different question? You want to comment on the same? Please, before I ask the next question.
Exactly. So civil engineering contracts and the legal team that you have, they need to be accredited to Association of Civil Engineers. Because arbitration for civil engineering projects is not in a similar fashion as civil cases. Civil cases, just as the Minister of Local Government said, civil cases, they take so long, two, three, four years to conclude a matter. So for construction projects, more especially like these CDF projects, the legal officers should expeditiously conclude these matters. Not you are saying, you are studying, you are studying the contract and this contract, this termination letter was written on fifth May twenty twenty-four. And you come to this, you come to this meeting in twenty twenty-five, you come with that first statement to say the legal officers are studying the matter. They shouldn't take it like the same way they represent people when they have a case in court. For contracts, there's need that they get tested to understand the association of civil engineers and Engineering Institute of Zambia on how expeditiously these cases can be dealt with. I, I just wanted to give an advice.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Maza. Thank you, thank you. Let's go to page thirty-two. CS? Appendix nine, failure to recover loans. CS? It is noted that you issued an amount of five million nine hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-five and an amount of one million eighty-five thousand eighty-two kwacha was paid at the time of audit. Meaning, there's a balance of two million four hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred eighty kwacha that still has to be recovered. Now, all this time, you have been very quiet. You have referred us to Appendix seventeen. When you go to Appendix seventeen, it is showing that you have been very quiet all this time long, not until fourteenth of, I mean eleventh of February twenty twenty-five, when you heard that you are coming before your committee. That's when you started saving them with, remind the letters. Why didn't you do this all along? Because from what you have presented before your committee here is indicating that actually, after these letters, before you are coming here, an amount of one million two hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred nine kwacha, nine ngu, has been paid by the beneficiaries. So to start with, maybe, is this amount separate from the amount that is in the in the above box or it is inclusive in this? CS?
Thank you very much, Chair, for that question. Chair, I'll invite the Director of Finance to speak to that and maybe Director of Planning on the reasons why we took time to respond. I submit, Chair.
DF?
Thank you so much, Chair. I will start with see whether the amount of one point two million is inclusive of what was indicated in the schedule. Yes, it is, Chair, meaning that what has been indicated as action taken included the amount of one million and eighty-five thousand zero eighty-two kwacha. However, Chair, as we are coming to appear to this committee, we also managed to pass through the bank and collected a status report of where we are standing now. And according to the report that we got from the bank, the amount that has been collected so far has increased to three point five million, Chair.
Three point five?
Yes, and we have the evidence with us, of course, though we couldn't manage to, to print a number of copies.
Can, can we have that evidence? You have reached the three point five million?
Yes, Chair.
In terms of collections?
Yes, in terms of returning.
That was after you saved these letters?
Yes, after we saved the letters, Chair.
So that's why now, that's why now I've asked, why didn't you? Why have you not been saving them with the letters? They would have, I think, been paying more than expected. Why were you quiet?
Chair, we, we were not quiet. We've had several engagements with the beneficiaries through phone calls. So meaning that even before the reminder letter that we did, we made several phone calls with them.
Chair, through you?
Yes, Honorable Member for me.
Did you take them to police?
No, Chair.
You mean, you collected, the latest is three point five?
Yes.
Million?
Yes, Chair, the evidence is there.
You didn't take them to police?
No.
Are you sure?
No, I'm sure.
Okay, it's just through this engagement?
Yes, Chair.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So, Honorable Member for Kaumbwe? You, you want to go to the next question? I think before we go to page one, Honorable Member for Kaumbwe, just, I think, an encouragement to Kasungula Town Council, it's, please keep on with the same spirit, because this repayment pattern is, is quite encouraging and is a milestone. Not all councils have achieved this in terms of the repayments of loans that I think should be put on record. And it's like the people, the Kasungula Town Council, I think you are doing it as regards the payments of loans, and the people there in Kasungula, they are so, so hardworking and they understand the many peoples of these loans. But before we go there, this money is not supposed to stay in the account. Do you know that? It's supposed, it's a revolving fund, it's supposed to be given out to others so that the money keeps growing. You don't need to keep this money accumulating in the bank. This money is supposed to be given to others so that those others also use it and repay and then the, the number of beneficiaries keeps growing like that on a monthly basis. So that is, I think, the motive of this man. So when you go back, you make sure you sit down and again disbest these manners to other beneficiaries so that you can have a bigger net now that has been caught. Honorable Member for me, Tete, you had your hand up.
Yeah, you've said it.
I've said it?
Yes.
I entered into your mouth.
If as you are coming, the money has reached that and it's not from some other coffers of it is, it is local authority, it is true from the beneficiaries and they have paid back through you to the rest of all local authorities. That must be the way. But I'm pretty sure you have a list of those who could not, you just got a section out of it, yes or no? You, you still have more applicants? CS, do you still have more applicants? Loan beneficiaries, where is the planner? Do you have more applicants?
Planner? Yes, Chair, we have more applicants and just this week, the CDFC sought to consider applications from the applicant side, which you have.
So now, did you consider this money that is in the bank?
Chair, it's added together with what we have received and then once the process is finalized, everything will be paid out.
Excellent. Okay, that's good. Thank you so much. Honorable Member for Kaumbwe? Dr. Maza?
Page one, the rural electrification program. The rural electrification program in Kasungula, from Appendix one, there's the results from Rural Electrification Authority that one million, that was earmarked for this particular program, was not enough because they gave a list, the cost estimates for the scupped sites, which came to twenty-three million eight hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred ninety-six. And the sites, they are, they are all in Mombawad. Mombawad in Kasungula, one site is at Shiteve, Mombaw School and Mombaw Rural Health Post. You are advised that it is better to think of off-grid solutions in terms of like solar. And the CDFC, I've seen the minutes, they maintained the same sites. For RIA advised to say you can choose other sites that are maybe six hundred meters away from the national grid. But upon deliberations on the meeting that was held in May, on seventh May twenty twenty-five, it was still decided that let it be the same sites at, in Mombawad and the three sites that were chosen, but looking at solar solutions so that you work, work within the one million kwacha. My question is, how far have you gone in the procurement of renewable energy system for Mombaw site? Based on the fact that the RIA now is just waiting for your decisions. They already submitted their feasibility study report.
Yes, CS? Thank you very much, Chair. Chair, as rightly pointed out, RIA also gave advice that when you look at the cost estimates for each of those, those could be done at three hundred and fifty thousand per site with battery, with battery technology using the solar panels. So that's why, Chair, we have also stuck to the same project site in terms of just the cost of one million. In terms of the procurement process, Chair, I'll invite our procurement officer to just make, make a submission. I submit, Chair.
Procurement Officer?
Thank you, Chair. The procurement has been uploaded on the electronic.
May you kindly speak up? They are not hearing you on the radio.
Okay, thank you, Chair. The procurement has been, is being uploaded on the electronic government platform to invite bidders to participate in, in the tender, Chair.
Dr. Maza?
Is being uploaded or has been uploaded?
Sorry, has been uploaded, Chair.
Okay, so it is, when is the deadline for submission?
Chair, we are, for community projects, we are using simplified bidding because we are one of the projects that have been put on the pilot program in terms of the thresholds for simplified bidding. We have given it three weeks, Chair.
Just elastic qualification. I'm so a bit curious, because Mombawad is the only word that has been selected for electrification purposes. Even when RIA went to do an assessment, they found that the cost would be is, is above one million kwacha, which was twenty-three million kwacha, you had an opportunity to look for other sites that are closer to the grid. And it was still decided that it must be the same sites that are going to be provided with a solution of solar energy. My question is, is Kasungula electrification at only Mombaw was, was the only place that needed the electrification?
Yes, CS?
Thank you very much, Chair, for that question. Definitely not, Chair, Mombaw is not the only site that requires electrification. But I think that was felt to be a committee felt need and identified as a priority for that particular, for that particular community in Kasungula District. Chair, I will also be interested off record to note that there are also other interventions that the district has undertaken to try and ensure that we provide electricity to other outlying areas within the district. So RIA may not necessarily be the only service provider that we target to provide that power energy. I submit, Chair.
Thank you so much, concluding question?
Just a quicker one before you conclude.
The Honorable Member who comes from across the Zambezi River?
CS? Where is your legal advocate? Do you have one? Do you have one?
Thank you, Chair. The, the, the Local Government Service Commission did recruit one. Unfortunately, the officer didn't report. The people that we have are only senior legal officers, but we don't have a legal advocate for the local authority. I submit.
Are they the ones handling all these matters that are in court?
Chair, for, for now, we also collaborate with Livingston City Council in terms of legal representation. So Livingston City Council also does provide legal representation for the local authority. We do collaborate with them. Yes, sir.
Because we do not want Kasungula to be building in court. We cannot be held at ransom as a local authority for the projects that are in court. The quicker these matters are settled, the better. Chair, through you, just as you are winding. Kalengwa Mine has been in court, KCM as well. But your government now has come up with ways just to take out these mines out of court and start mining. So through you, you and your team and the Livingston advocates, let's have a way of taking out these projects that are, where are, sir? In court, they will never be finished. Take them out of court. Let's reach a consensus. We'll be losing more. Chair, sort of just mentioning that.
Thank you so much.
Four stairful houses, a classroom block, a maternity. We cannot be building in court. Not in Kasungula. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Honorable Member. I think those were concluding remarks. Kasungula Town Council, thank you so much for coming through. Uh, National Assembly to come and appear before your committee, Local Government Accounts Committee. As you go home, please put in mind that you had the following weaknesses. Contractor failures, where multiple terminated contractors have been noticed on maternity annexes, dormitories due to non-performance and liquidity issues. Two, procurement bottlenecks. You had repeated re-advertising, tenders and appeals from bidders stored in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three projects and spent funds of about eleven point three million and utilized due to late disbursements and rigid procurement processes. Law, loan recovery, only thirteen percent at the time of audit. But now you have improved, which is a very good, eh, eh, sign on your side. After the audit, you really improved and I think on, on that one, you have performed to satisfaction. So key priority areas to take note are contractor vetting, pre-qualifying contractors based on the financial stability and track record. Two, streamlined procurement. You must adopt fast attending process while maintaining compliance. You must also have a timely fund utilization by prioritizing projects. Also, loan monitoring should be done so that you are not caught napping every time, eh, auditors come to check upon you. In conclusion, proactive procurement planning and stricter contractor oversight are critical to delivering consistent projects on time. At this juncture, Kasungula Town Council, I wish to withdraw the immunity that I dressed you in when we just came in. And the session has come to an end with you. We wish you well. Go well back to Kasungula and serve the good people of Kasungula diligently. At, at the same time, you are serving the Zambians at large. Because the facilities that you are constructing in Kasungula, all of us can access them wherever we are. Thank you so much for coming through.
Thank you very much, Chair. Most obliged, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Well, there you have it. Kasungula Town Council has made its submission before the Committee on Local Government Accounts and that's on the consideration of the report of the Audit General on the Constituency Development Fund for the financial year ended thirty first December twenty twenty three. The council was led by their council secretary, Mr. Lubinda Mualla. And still to make an appearance before the committee is Namuala Town Council. Keep watching Parliament Television, the only station that brings Parliament closer to you.